I just want to freshen my eyes daylight to your room. Sounds good.
Bring the meeting to order, please stand by your meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll do roll call.
Harry.
Here.
Plonk.
Here.
Here.
Your guard guy.
Here.
And captured excuse are meaning and witness.
Very much. Do I have a motion for items A and B approval of the minutes?
I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through BS presented waiting the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, carrying none, motion carried. Bills of warrants, do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve bills of warrants number 14227 paid in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and forty-four cents and bills of warrant number 14228 unpaid in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents and the visa in the amount of one thousand one hundred eighty dollars and five cents as presented within the meeting.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion, questions? We'll do a roll call vote.
Harry.
Yes.
Bosley.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Your door.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. We don't have any presentations tonight, we'll move on to the mayor's report. It's the biggest day in Lunapere, it is upon us. Thanks once again to the Freedom Festival Committee for joy, all for work, for all of our sponsors, corporate and private sponsors, mostly the countless hours that the Freedom Festival Committee puts in to make this happen. It is all year long, it's a lot of stress, the stress is really ramping up now, we still need help, if you would like to help for an hour or more, we will certainly accept your help, lots of boots on the ground to put this thing together. It's a great community event, takes a lot of work and we sure would appreciate help with that. Tomorrow morning about 600 bicyclists will ride into Lunapere, this is part of the Pedal Across Lower Michigan or Palm Ride, they do this every, every year they do the ride, you can't hear you, every, every year they do the ride, about every four to six years they end it in Lunapere, they do a different route every year. This year they are finishing up Lunapere, they're just using local roads, so they'll ride in, start arriving about 10 each, each group rides just by themselves, then they'll gather as one group, take photos, probably dip the front tire in the lake area, as the tradition goes, they start out dripping their back tire in Lake Michigan, ride across the state, they'll pose for photos and they'll line up and ride up to Mason High School as one big group and finish their ride there with lunch. It's quite a sight to see with all the matching jerseys, all the people really happy to be done with it, especially this week with all the heat, and it's, it's a great event for our, our city. Due to the use of the Water Tower, Water Tower Park building and our public meeting schedule, we really need to provide a Friday cleaning, cleaning, we need to add that to our schedule. What happens is we use the meeting, the room more extensively during the week than we have before, mostly because the seniors come in and that group is growing, they have lunches here, they do pay rent for the, for the building. Normally we clean after a rental, we get it prepared for the next one, but what happens is during the week, it's, it's not getting cleaned after the previous event, so we're gonna need to add one more, we do have somebody lined up that wants to do that, I'm gonna meet with her tomorrow and work that out, but I'd like, like to add a Friday morning, or Friday afternoon cleaning actually, to the schedule to make sure we present a clean building to the renters. Moving on to the lighthouse, it was a very slow start to the summertime because of the weather, cold and windy, but now with the heat, as everybody knows, we're seeing record crowds even during weekdays. It's been tough to keep up on the restrooms, they're cleaned every morning, after about one o'clock, they need some attention again. We do have, that same person is willing to do that on an on-call basis as needed. It, it, it looking pretty bad, I've had, had some complaints, I've gone down there and I know it's clean in the morning, but then through that much, that heavy use, it just needs a, a touch up again. So I'm proposing that we add a cleaning as needed, we have the person. The physical properties of the building, they just need some attention. The building is over 12 years old now, some of the things are starting to wear out, we're, we're gonna need to invest a little bit of money. I contacted a flooring company today to get some, get an estimate, I'll, I'll contact some more, the floor is just down to the concrete, the original epoxy that was on there wore through, it's time we clean that up. I'd like to add something to the walls, I don't know why they went with the drywall finished wall, it really needs something more robust than, as a public facility off a beach, I, this is the only one I know of, and it's really causing problems with trying to keep it clean. We need something you can just go in and hose everything off and we can't do that now. So I'm proposing some changes, I'm not, we're not spending any money, but just get ready for it, we're gonna see what we need to do to improve that facility, do the, the regular maintenance on it, and the revenue I think is there to support it through the parking, the DDA is taking an active role in the parking improvements, we're working on more signage to streamline the traffic flow through there. Residence access to the post office has, has been a problem, we may need to reserve one spot just for the post office, because I, I heard from a couple of different residents independently that they went down there and didn't have a place to park during a weekday. It's never been a problem before because it's never been that busy while the, while the post office is open, now it is a problem, we're, we're gonna work on a solution to that. We wanna provide a really good experience at the beach because that's the only part of Lunapere some people see. We do want to enforce the parking on the, on the residential streets especially, we do have the right to ticket and tow, it is posted for that and it will come down to that when vehicles are parked where they're blocking traffic, blocking a street, blocking a fire hydrant, get ready, it, it's, it's bound to happen if that's what it takes to, for compliance.
I really think that we should look into getting a parking bay.
Yes.
To just walk around and look at the plates and see who's not paying, because I guarantee 50% of those people are paying. And the police don't have time to do it, they need to, like, sign them, catch people running the stop sign and catch the speeders.
Yeah, we, we.
We definitely need someone, because Kelly can't keep doing it.
Right, right, and we, we talked to this, it was a discussion at the DEA meeting, and, and, you know, the police chief gets calls, you know, there's, he goes from call to call sometimes.
Right.
And it, don't, you can deputize somebody to, to enforce parking, and they don't need to be M. Cole certified where a police officer does to handle some of the other things.
And they're gonna see somebody out there with the vest on and a notepad and they're all gonna run to.
Right, right, and we already talked about closer monitoring of that, and, and we're, I'm glad to hear that because we're on the same page there, I, I agree with that fully.
For the bicycling, that was supposed to be posted on our page and it was not.
Oh, the bicyclists?
Because I was asked by a couple different people when they looked up, it was Saturday, and I said, no, I believe it's Friday, I have to go back through my notes.
I'll, I'll.
But it was supposed to be posted, it was not, maybe.
I think I did a while ago, yeah.
Charlie or Kelly, because they have enough on their plate, but maybe we should, like, appoint somebody to do this?
Yeah.
Post on our media page, not me.
I, I can do that, yes, yeah.
You, don't you have a?
Yeah, Charlie does the website. I will, I will make sure that's posted one more time on our, I posted I think a while back, but I was closer to the event, just got busy and didn't, didn't post it.
Well, things have been crazy, it's, it's been a crazy couple weeks with everything coming up, so.
Yeah.
Thought I would mention.
Yes, I will, I'll, I'll try to get it out there tonight, that's a good, good point.
Jim, does the mic go up anyhow?
I, I think so. I, I am turning my head and, and that makes a big difference with, I'm not turning my microphone, so, thank you, yeah, I will, I will keep up on that. It started out a little bit hot, this system is a little bit fragile. Is that better? Can everybody hear? That's all I have, moving on to the department reports. The police report was included, chief has been busy collecting UTVs and, and bringing equipment in for the Freedom Festival, he worked all day today, any questions on the police report? Fire department report, we have none, the building report, we don't have anything, it's off week for that. Committee reports, DDA, like I said, they've been reactive, Dewey, do you want to expound?
Yeah, I got some flip notes here and some sad news, so just bear with me here. So the May 20th did get approved, um, at our last meeting.
What got approved?
The, the May 20th meeting minutes did get approved.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. And we did start looking at some MDA webinars online, there's actually a lot of really good city resources there, and that actually makes it shareable, and when we looked into that at our last MDA conference last year.
Can you put that microphone just a little closer to you?
Hello? So when we looked at the MDA conference last year, they did post a fair amount of webinars and a lot of very useful links for the city. When you purchase those webinars as a member of the MDA, which we are, our DDA is a member of the MDA, you get to share it for two months, so I think those are good resources that can be shared, we do plan on taking, I think it was like a list of five or something like that, just staring at Connie here, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy to share that with whoever. The sad news comes with the Adirondack share, will not be ready by Freedom Festival, so they, they're still working on a couple of templates for that in order to get that cut and all in all, that will not be ready, so apologies, but it will be ready by then.
We'll keep them coming back for more.
That's right.
Thank you much, thank you very much Dewey. Flood, we have no report, parks in wreck?
Nothing new, our meeting is the second Tuesday, seven o'clock at the library, and we've been purchasing some repair items for all the benches and all, all three of the parks, paint for some of the equipment down at Seven Street Parks, so stuff's moving along, there should be some improvements here soon.
And planning?
Planning weekend and open meeting, it's online, well, on YouTube.
Yep.
And covered, Mike Lucarelli and Sophie to open their little store that they have, it was denied. And I think that's pretty much about it, that's, there was a lot of discussion that went on in that, so.
Yep, I will take the opportunity to thank planning for all the work they did on our master plan, which is now complete, we have our, our official copy, we're good with that. That was a lot of work, it's extremely important, and we appreciate it, everybody, it's good to see Frank here tonight because he was a part of that early on, and.
I think if Mike wants to open up your store on Saturday for the Freedom Fest, Sophie, if you want to, I'll count you as a vendor and I'll waive the fee. Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. We can, yeah, moving on to the Renus contract, I'm gonna recommend that we table that for tonight because we just did not have time to examine, we have some good leads, but I would like to give that to due diligence at needs, and I don't think we were, we're there yet. So my recommendation is to table the old business until we can review companies and get some quotes. New business, public hearing for our budget, Connie did a, a wonderful job, especially doing the, the summary that I, I, I just, I really love it, I just longed for this for a long time, this is, this is fantastic, this is the best I've ever had since I've been mayor, and we really appreciate all the hard work into that, but we have our bud, our public hearing, we'll close the public hearing for the budget, move on to item C, adoption of the 25, 20, 2025, 2026 budget, our city employees' working agreement is item D, chief Andrea's salary increase is E, the budget amendments that always come in on the last day, last council meeting of the fiscal year, and digital perspectives contract is G. And I believe that's it for our new business, any questions there? All things we've been working diligently on for a long time. With that, I'll open the floor to public comments. The microphone is open, we just ask you to state your name and what city you're from, and we welcome your comments tonight, any, any kind of public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello?
Yep.
Hi, Mike Lucarelli, 4642 Allen Cove Road, Lunapere, Michigan. Yeah, I was, I was at the public hearing a couple days ago.
Excuse me.
I, I think the reason why it was denied, according to what Jim explained at the meeting, was he sees this as being commercial property and therefore we need to act more like a commercial business, so to speak, versus a resident, even though Mike Dembski had called it a home occupation as a residential issue to be voted on. The planning commission had the ability to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, and they didn't really look at any of the various conditions, but other than that, I think the main reason is, what I brought forward last meeting was I'd like to develop the downtown and turn it into commercial, therefore they could simply open as a commercial business. The problem is I'm at a standstill because I can't go to planning, planning has no authority to make any decisions on, on what I proposed to the city last time, so everything's in limbo until the city decides which of the three options they'd like to go with, and if you need, you know, me to bring in the person that negotiated the, the whole deal with the city on the trade, I'm happy to do that at the next meeting. In other words, when, when we, if, if you look at all the information I gave you, there was a, a trade, I, I traded the city sidewalks for the rights to develop the street, and in return I was supposed to get a $920,000 M.D. Paver project, which turned down to be a $408,000 asphalt and concrete project, and no street, no compensation, no, nothing really. So, so I'd like to address that, I don't want to just bury it. I know Jim has kind of been pushing back on this for a year and a half now, but, but it's something that needs to be addressed, so I'm happy to have the attorney come back next time, and you guys are welcome to talk to him. Your attorney and my attorney negotiated the whole deal, and I'm comfortable with what they did, the city has not lived up to any of it, and I've lived up to absolutely everything as promised. So I need an answer, one, two, or three, and I would like that to be on the next city council agenda, one, two, or three, okay? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have a, a few comments, I'll hold them to the, to the end on that to clarify some things. Any other, anybody else on public input? If not, we'll close the pub, the community input section of the meeting and move on to council action, the first one being the public hearing for the budget 2025 to 2026, do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the closing of the regular meeting and open the public hearing at 7:22 with all council members except for Nikling and Wakeman being present as presented within the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Bosley.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open, I would like to invite Connie Cole to come up and go over this, this beautiful piece of work we have here, and thank her for all of the, all the work she put into that, it's, it's extensive, and it really helps explain. We've had comments in the past where people didn't know what we went through and weren't there for all the negotiations and back and forth that we did and the prioritizing to where we can spend our limited amount of resources and how we can balance this budget. This really sums it up well, I'll, I'll give the floor to you Connie.
So in the back of the room, I think there was the summary sheet, was there also this document, but we'll have both of these probably on the website?
Yes.
Okay, so I, just maybe clarification if people listen to this and they can actually see the documentation online. Okay, so I'm Connie Cole, why I'm here is I moved to background, I'm not a CPA, but I do have 40 years of finance experience with General Motors. We purchased our home here in '21, in '22 I came to the public hearing, there was no handout to the public at all, so it was kind of hard to have any public hearing because there wasn't really anything available to the public. And then I started to participate in the budget workshop meetings because as a citizen I was curious about whether or not this, the city was financially healthy or not, I'd heard some feedback about parks in wreck and a basketball hoop not being installed, so I just got curious about, you know, what was the condition of the city finances and just how many employees did we have, and how much did people get paid, that type of thing. So that's when I started digging into things, so I participated in the budget workshops for the last three years, and last year we had a similar presentation that we did, unfortunately it wasn't recorded last year, but, so it may be a little challenging if people don't have the document in front of them, but, so I guess to start off, we have various funds within the city finances, and those are pretty much driven where we have to keep those funds separate, and most of the time they're based on like the tax millages. So the first, we have four funds that are pretty much driven by local tax millages. We have the general fund, which is basically most of the operating cost of the city, we have the police millage fund, which primarily covers the wages for the police department, those funds also have to be supplemented with the, by the general fund because there's not enough in the police millage to cover all of the expenses. And then we have the flood and erosion control millage, so that again is, is all delegated to be spent on just flood and erosion control. And then we have our garbage and rubbish collection fee, which is supposed to be pretty much at a break even, whatever it costs the city, we pass on to the citizens. And then we have the downtown development authority, that is funded both by some of the local taxes as well as some county taxes, based on how much the value within the downtown district, how much the property values have increased year over year, or since the base in 2013, I should say. Then we have two street funds, a major street fund and a local street fund, those are basically funded by state excise and gasoline taxes. We also have a waste treatment fund, which that is funded by the South County, South County sewage fees, you know, that you see on your water bills, so that pretty much funds the waste treatment plant. And then we have an old fund that still exists, but it's not really very active, it's a community development fund, there used to be some block grants where money was provided to citizens to improve their homes, and there's still a couple of them that are due, owe money back to the city. So if we move on to the next section, and this is just kind of a recap of what are all the revenues that the city receives, and this is based on kind of this past year. So by far, the bulk of our funds come from property taxes and the marijuana tax, so that's roughly 26%. We didn't have any federal grants this year, we also get some revenue sharing from the state, and we also make around $120,000 on our parking funds, or parking collection. But I think the important thing, if you look at this pie chart, is that roughly half of the city's funds are the general fund, so it's like 1.1 million out of the 2.4 that the city has in revenue, so the majority of that is the general fund. And then if you look at where do we spend our money, that's kind of similar, that almost half of our appropriations are for the general fund, basically 1.1 million out of the 2.2 total. So most of the money is spent on, 13% is just on the primary running of the government, the, the city I should say, so the treasurer, the clerk, city hall, all of those types of expenses are in there. And then retiree cost is also a significant portion, it's 18% of our cost each year, roughly And then we have public safety, we have the fire department, we have roughly 7% of our costs that are associated with the Department of Public Works, and then kind of the other half of the chart is, is pretty much talking about what is spent on the road funds, and another big chunk of that money is the wastewater treatment cost, it's basically 29% of our total cost. So then the other thing that I don't know has had a lot of focus in previous years is the fund balance, so this really is kind of saying, it's, it's kind of like your bank account, it's like you're getting so much revenue in each month, you're paying so much out, so are we kind of staying ahead of things and, and not spending more than what's coming in? And the good news is that we are in, it's, it's kind of a tight situation at times, but we are, you know, spending within our revenue stream amounts. So the general fund has roughly a million dollars in that fund that is built up over several years, and that's roughly, you know, that's pretty close to a year's worth of expenses, and that money really should be kept aside to be allocated for capital funds or capital projects and, and major one-time type of cost. And if you look at this chart, pretty much all of the funds have positive balances, you can see where, like flood and erosion control in the past year actually spent more than what came in, but we had some major repairs on some pumps, but we still have a sufficient balance in there, it's, it's $280,000. So even though we spent more than what we brought in this year, we still have a sufficient amount in there. So some of the highlights of what we spent money on in the past year are some maybe unusual things, we had the master plan that was updated and finalized, we had general, the tax revenue basically went up six and a half percent, so roughly $38,000 year over year, primarily driven by property values and marijuana tax. We also had an increase in the amount of money that was dedicated to the downtown development of additional $5,000 versus the prior year. City Hall, we did bat removal and exterior repairs, we had a new water heater and some plumbing upgrades, the lighthouse elevator is finally completed, and we do have an occupancy permit now for the lighthouse. Water Tower Park building, we put on new exterior doors, and then we also had a new city clerk that started last June, and a new treasurer, one that started in December, and then we had another one that started just a few weeks ago in May. That caused us to incur some additional training costs for the overlap as well as some payout of some comp time that had been built up by the employees. We also added a full-time, a Department of Public Works employee in November, we did a fixed asset inventory for all. We did a fixed asset inventory for all departments, so we now have a better listing of the age and a current list of all of our capital assets within the city. The Luna Pier logo was finished on the I-75 bridge. We had grants for the fire department for an automated external defibrillator and we also had a grant for the security camera at the lighthouse. Flood control, I mentioned earlier, we did have a first street pump repair. And then parks and rec accomplished quite a bit this past year as well. Most of that was driven by fundraising, you know, and we had our first night market last year, which was a success. And then there's just been all sorts of continuing things that the Parks and Rec department has done. They continued their summer smash, the calendar fundraiser, planting flowers, just done all sorts of things and mostly through volunteers and fundraising. So moving on to the budget process, there basically were four meetings that council members attended, whichever ones were available, attended. They reviewed each account line by line and discussed recommended changes. It was also a good time to kind of talk about priorities and things that maybe need to be looked at that might need some additional focus going forward. Most of the accounts are at carryover, but a lot of them were adjusted for wage increases. You see on the agenda, we've got the new labor wage agreement with our employees. Those numbers were incorporated into the budget. We also discussed the lighthouse rental and that there's opportunities to possibly make some additional money on rentals there, but we also only have some added expenses that will be needed before we can do that. For the fire department, we included $40,000 for equipment replacement that's pending a grant approval. And for the police department, we also included roughly $70,000 for a police vehicle for next year, but I think we've also are considering getting another used one here sooner than that, so. We discussed the need to have a capital spending plan. I mean, we know that the fire hall roof is in poor condition as well as the building needs some other exterior repairs. We also have a lot of aging Department of Public Works equipment. The library foundation needs some work and then there's always dredging and just the pier in general. There's all sorts of things that still need attention. We also discussed the value and the need for possibly having a part-time city administrator or manager and then also the local road fund. We have applied for a grant, I believe for $125,000 that we have some matching. We have not included all of that cost in the budget yet until it's finalized. So from a millage perspective, there's really no changes. The Luna Pier operating fund mill stays at just under 10 mills. The police is just under two mills and flood and erosion control is just under one mill. The other thing of note is the fee that's on your summer tax bill for garbage pickup will be going down to $65 from $130 and that's because basically we've been building up balances in that reserve account that we need to start to work those down. So it's possible that the rate will go down for a year or two and then it will probably go back up to the $100 range. The contract is also up for renewal this spring, so it'll switch back, but there'll be a benefit for probably one or two years. Staffing and wage assumptions. We have basically our elected positions. We have the mayor who makes $3,000 a year plus $1,750 for road administration. So that's roughly $4,750 for a full year. That's less than $400 a month. We have six council members that make $1,200 each year, so that's $100 a month. So in my view, in my opinion, that's not even covering the time that you're in meetings, let alone all the time set our council and mayor are spending doing a lot of other things. From a full-time perspective, paid employees, we have a treasurer that's roughly, both the treasurer and the city clerk make roughly $51,000 a year. We are granting them a dollar increase versus the prior year. We have a full-time director of municipal services. He makes close, like $71.8,000 a year. 75% of his time is dedicated to waste treatment and 25% to the Department of Public Works. And there's also a 4% wage increase in there for him. We have two wastewater treatment employees that are full-time that make roughly $40,000 per year. They will also be getting a dollar increase in pay. And then we've had one full-time DPW employee that I believe is resigning this week and so that position may be replaced with a slightly different position. It might be an employee that's joint waste treatment and DPW or maybe an assistant in training. And there is some money set aside in the budget for that. From a part-time perspective, we have the police chief at $41,000 a year. We have part-time officers that make $23 to $25 an hour. We have a fire chief that makes $3,500 a year. We have part-time fire employees that make $15 a call and also have some training pay that they receive. We have a building inspector at $18,000 a year that's part-time. And then we also have some plumbing and electrical inspectors that are paid on a fee basis. We have an assessor, it was talked about a little bit earlier, that that contract is up for negotiation. That's $20,000 a year. And then we also have part-time Department of Public Works seasonal employees that are currently at $15 an hour and their wage will be increased to $1,650. And they really do a lot of the lawn mowing and the additional, I mean, we rely on them a lot to get things done. So the proposed budget, there is the revenue, there's nothing really significant changing in the revenue. To me, we always try and stay conservative in our revenue assumptions and right now we have no assumptions in here for donations or grants. From an appropriation standpoint, maybe I should also say, so total revenue in the budget is basically $1,114,000.5, which is slightly less than what we're expecting in the current year. And then appropriations, we're expecting, we have a budgeted amount of appropriations in the general fund of $1,003,110. This is slightly less than last year's budget, but it is higher than what we expect to spend in the current year. We're roughly at $1,083,000 for the current year. And if you look at how much we're spending versus the revenue, it actually shows overspending $196,000. I don't find that overly concerning because $138,000 of that is for equipment replacements. And to me, the rest of it is just being conservative and, you know, looking at what we think our spending might be. For the other funds, there's really no significant changes in the police fund other than the wage rate changes for the chief and the clerk. Flood and erosion control, we don't expect any significant spending there, but there could always be pump failures and repairs that are needed, but we have sufficient funds for that. I already talked about the local, the road funds and the Ganyar Road repaving that should be done within the next year, at least possibly started within the next year if the grant goes through. We did include engineering fees for that roadwork. Rubbish collection, I already talked about that, the fee going down. The downtown development, our reserves are building up, but we are certainly looking at a list of items to be spending in the downtown area. The streetlights are still on the docket to be looked at as well as, you know, other pavilion improvements and other things that we're looking at in the downtown area. Waste treatment plant, there's no significant changes there either. So I guess to kind of close this, I would just say, you know, revenue continues to moderately increase. We seem to be staying conservative in our spending, but our fund balances are increasing, so that's all good news. I also feel, this is kind of my opinion and I think others share it, that we really do need to spend more time as a city between the planning, DDA, parks and rec, the council to really talk about how do we take this limited number of resources we have and make sure that we're spending it on the right things and that we're not overlapping at times, especially in the downtown area. It's a struggle at times to kind of say, well, is it parks and rec? Is it the city? Is it the downtown? Is it the DDA that should be doing that and how do we better coordinate those things? The city continues to benefit from grants, donations and citizens who are willing to pitch in and work towards solutions. I mean, I really think that this is kind of how we've been able to make improvements in the last few years and maybe it went on before then. I'm sure it always has, but we've got grant writers that help us to try and get funding. Parks and rec has made a lot of improvements to the playground equipment and a lot of that is just due to the time that people spend. And then we also have our council and our mayor. I look at it and say, none of these people are here because of the money that they're making. They're doing it because they care. And the more citizens that we have that can care and kind of kick in to help where we don't always have the resources is always greatly appreciated.
Thank you Connie.
Thank you Connie.
Thank you Connie.
It's a great presentation of where we are, the budget process, continuing our recovery from when the Jarrah Whitting plant closed down and we lost roughly 65% of our tax base. Coming back now and trying to catch up on things that we couldn't do in the past while still balancing the budget. I think our, our future is bright. We have a place that, that people love and, thank you Connie for summarizing that. The floor is open. This is a public hearing. If anybody has any input, this is your, your chance to comment on the budget. Yes, I see a hand there.
I have a question. Charlie from 4423. Oh, my understanding that the administrator and the treasurer before our police, that our chief?
Chief is part-time.
Chief is part-time.
Oh, he is part-time?
Yeah.
We can't afford full-time? I mean, because I see they're making over $50,000 a year.
That's with benefits, right?
I'm just curious.
It, um...
That's hourly.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is true. Our, our chief, we had to cut back when, uh, when we were losing over $100,000 a year out of our general fund. We, we, we went to a part-time department and he doesn't work as many hours either on that.
No, believe me, we noticed that.
Right.
We noticed that.
Right.
With any of the police, so.
But we do make it up with enough, you know, other officers. We, we actually increased our coverage time for the police before when we went to part-time. It was a hard decision, but that's why we went to part-time because, because we were not getting...
I get it, because we don't have the money, but you remember as I do, seven days a week, they were 24 hours out here.
They, they were, yeah.
But I was just curious about that. I didn't realize he was part-time though.
Yes, all, all of the officers, including the chief, are part-time. Anybody else? The floor is open. If not...
I propose a motion to approve the closing of the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting at 7:45 with all council members being present except for Wakeman and Needling.
Needing.
Needing and Needing as presented waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote?
Wong.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. The regular meeting is now open. Do I have a motion for the '25-'26 budget?
I will make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 budget as presented waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support. I'll let Charlie decide who jumped first. Any discussion?
Just a statement, thank you Connie for your work on this. It's fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you Connie.
I agree. This is the report I've always dreamed of having. If not, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Wong.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. A lot of work finalized right there. City employee working agreement?
I propose a motion to approve the city employees' working agreement for two-year periods starting July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2027, as recommended by the Employee Relations Committee as presented waving the reading.
And thank you Connie for the help.
Thank you, support.
Yes.
I did have a question, whatever.
Yep, now's the time to ask.
We're giving the treasurer a raise and she was just hired at a certain rate that she knew she was getting and we're giving her a raise and she's only been here...
There was a lot of negotiation for that and there is some fumble on this with her being trained and everything, so it ended up to keep them consistently throughout the years that we give her the dollar raise, but she's waiting a probation period to get any of her other benefits and the raise.
I, I think it's a very, it's a very fair wage. It's not, I mean, it's, it's fair to the city. It's very, it's very fair on both sides with what it costs to get, what the going rate is for the work that they do.
I know, but she didn't accept the rate that we hired her at just recently, so.
We were playing devil's advocate and that was a big discussion.
Yep.
There was a lot of arguments.
Yes, and, and thank you for the personnel committee. They really did work hard on that.
And Connie worked extremely hard. She looked up some of the new laws for us. I don't know if she slept for the last two weeks, but she did an amazing job.
Any other questions? Comments? Do a roll call vote.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Wong. Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. Item E, chief end raise salary.
I propose a motion to approve chief end raise salary increase of $1 per hour as presented waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support. Any discussion on that? I will say the chief is doing a fantastic job, especially this week, putting a lot of, a lot of time in, using his own equipment to haul UTVs, you know, his own vehicle to haul UTVs and bring them in to keep everybody safe.
And answering all my text messages.
Yes. We'll do a roll call vote.
Terry.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Wong. Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Budget amendments? Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented waving the reading.
You have a motion, we have support. Any discussion? We'll go right to a roll call vote.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. Renius and Renius contract.
I have digital perspective.
Oh, digital perspective, sorry. Look right at you. Digital perspective contract, do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the digital perspective contract as presented waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion? I will say they've been, they've done a very good job. They're, they're the best that we've ever had since I've been in, at City Hall and I'm really happy with their work. Do a roll call vote.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Wong. Yes.
Terry. Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. Now, Renius and Renius.
I propose a motion to table the Renius and Renius contract until we get proposals from them plus one, if not two, other.
We have a motion, we have support. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Terry.
Yes.
Wong. Yes.
Ozzy.
Yes.
Stojewski.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. That concludes our business for tonight on the final meeting of the fiscal year. Council input and information, stuck down on this end.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Counselor Ozsler.
I have a question, maybe a comment. I don't know. Our sewers, I've been, a few people have commented to me and I've brought it up to a few people asking questions. There's like a sewage smell that's coming up in some of the houses. And from what I understand, Councilman Wakeman has brought this up in the past and it's been overlooked. I don't know, because I'm still new to the table. So is this, is this kind of a problem with several houses? Like down at my end, it isn't my house. It is in Amanda's house and a few other people have voiced that, overhearing us talk about it. But admittedly, we're not quiet. So has this been brought to anybody's attention? Is there something that we need to look into because we're having sewage gases coming up in our houses?
That should, it should be investigated, certainly. We, on the lines, Dave is always very responsive. I mean, within, within minutes, if, you know, hours at the most.
Do we need to get a hold of?
Uh, I don't know because the going, the smell up in the houses doesn't make sense because everything is vented to where you, it should be all be sealed off at the house.
It should be, and I've had somebody come out, a personal plumber come out because it drove me crazy. I thought I didn't have enough fleet in the world. And he said that it's fine. It's the outer lines.
Yeah, if, I mean, the only time that happens is if there's a leak somewhere.
I don't have a leak in my house, so I don't know.
Right, that's, they, and we own everything in the street. And sometimes you do get a break and like you said, you can smell it.
Yes.
We had one down here and people passing by, you could smell it. And we found the leak and attached that. The lines, the personal lines begin from the street to the, to the house.
I know where it is because the guy showed.
Right, so that, I mean, Dave, we can talk to Dave about it and see what, see what he knows about it. He knows it much, the system much better than I do. But no, anytime they get a response, they're immediate, Dave's immediately on it.
Then I can reach out then.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good because.
Tell other people.
Yeah, if you have a problem to, to, if something needs to be investigated. But Dave is very responsive and I know anytime, usually when I smell something, I tell him and he's already working on it.
My first thing was call the plumber. There's something wrong.
Yeah, and, and that could be because it's, I mean, but Dave, Dave can comment on it further too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Counselor Perry.
Anybody who wants to help set up, clean up Freedom Festival, find me. I'll be down there all day.
Counselor Skolski.
The only thing is, I just want to reiterate how thankful we are to Connie Cole and the amount of hours she has spent with budget and wages and everything for the city. It's just a really big asset and we really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Connie.
Okay, I just have one, one thing as, as promised. I know a little bit more about the process and the decision the planning commission was faced with. And the activity that is consistent with the principal use of that property, according to state law, the right way to do it is to present a site plan to the planning commission with everything you need. I have no doubt that the activity would be approved with that method of following the state procedure. I know that was offered several times and denied. The person applying did not want to do it that way and said they wanted to do a home occupation, which does not fit that zone. It's a downtown mixed use. The usage they want to do fits within the downtown mixed use. There is a state mandated process for doing it. It is outlined very clearly in our planning, in, in the state law, in the Zoning Enabling Act. It is in our zoning ordinance. This is the way you do it. It was offered several times and I heard it personally offered that way. And the applicant chose to go another route.
Think we could write down the steps and print off stuff and give it to the applicant?
Absolutely.
So he knows exactly.
Absolutely, and it was, it was, it was explained very clearly a number of times.
Maybe we need to write it at bullet points and.
We, we can do that. But the person has to agree to follow the process. It was very clearly presented and very adamantly denied. The person denied, Mike, I'll say Mike, denied, he didn't want to do it that way. And so there is a loophole where you can go through and present it to the planning commission and the planning commission may make an exception after a public hearing. They don't have to make that exception and they don't have to make numerous exceptions, especially, which was in this case. So I agree that that should be, that's a downtown mixed use. It should be used for retail as was applied. All it takes is a site plan and the proper approvals through that, per the state law. And that's, that's all I have on that. We have no correspondence. Received and sent. I'm gonna have to dig down to my last page. Uh-oh. Is that easier? Yeah. Fourteenth, uh, and City Hall is closed Friday for July 4th. Thank you very much. Future meeting dates, Parks and Recreation, Tuesday, July 8th, 7:00 PM at the library. Flood and Erosion, Tuesday, July 15th, at Water Tower Park. DDA, Tuesday, July 22nd, 7:00 PM at Lunapier Lighthouse. Planning Commission, January 22nd, the same day at 6:00 PM here at Water Tower.
July 22nd.
Oh, July, yeah. July, sorry. It's written right. I just read it wrong. City Council, Thursday, July 10th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Water Tower Park. Do I have a?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Meeting is adjourned.